All right, at this time do we have approval of today's agenda, I can entertain the motion.
Second.
Second. I has been properly moved to second that we approve today's agenda, all in favor, let it be known by voice for I.
Aye.
All right, motion carries. That's fine. All right. Do we have approval of the budget minute meetings for August fourteenth, twenty twenty five, entertain the motion.
Second.
Second.
It's been properly moved to second that we approve the minute meetings for the budget for August fourteenth. All right, all in favor, let it be known by voice for I.
Aye.
And motion carries. Approval of public hearing meeting, uh, minutes from October the first, do we have a motion in the second?
So move.
Second.
It's been properly moved to second.
Budget.
It should be budget meeting better.
Okay.
Okay. Okay.
You mean for October first?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Okay, I got what you're saying. All right, so we'll see that, um, approve of, um, budget minute meetings for October first, two thousand twenty five.
So move.
Second.
It's been properly moved to second, all right, all in favor, let it be known by voice for I.
Aye.
Budget minute meetings have been approved for October first. Approve our regular minute meetings for October seventh meeting?
So move.
Second.
It's been properly moved to second that we approve October seventh, regular minute meetings, all in favor, let it be known by voice for I.
Aye.
Motion carries. Do we have a motion to open public hearing?
So move.
Second, it's been properly moved to second that we, uh, open the public hearing for the twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six proposed budget. All right, all in favor, let it be known by voice for I.
Aye.
Uh, motion carry, uh, public hearing is officially open. Uh, this is a public hearing, so, uh, comments, statements from the public, uh, is allowed. Talking about money. Do we hear anything back on the, uh, question in reference to, um, the timeframe of the meeting, if we want to withdraw publicly? I didn't, I didn't see, I didn't get it now.
I want to ask if, um, if there's an update to the time to withdraw from, how do you see it?
Uh, no, no, it's just whenever you make that choice, I think, I can't, I didn't research, I don't recall, but there's a timeframe. Mr. Chairman, you might remember, I told you that, uh, I believe, is it, is it a year or, uh, maybe you could do that.
Language is a big thing, yeah, but what we also need to explore, which I talked to you later, but, um,
Yes, sir.
Just to see the attorney, get some other options. Yeah. The great thing about all of the agreements, I believe you understand more than anybody's loopholes. And I believe we'll discuss one, uh, shortly, uh, when they help us get to a goal. Uh, a goal that we need.
Right, right. I'm sorry.
Yeah, no, no worries, but, um, you know, part of the thing is everyone talking about we're broke. And we owe money and things like that. And everybody talking about ideas of administration have started itself to be that way. And just the administration idea the last four years has took care of things that administrations didn't take care of for decades. And with this administration was hit with a lot of lawsuits because people got mad because who won the election in twenty twenty one. With this administration had endured, when instead of people working with us, they rather be opposers, which caused more destruction in money. Than any administration had endured, and all because this commission became more blacker. And that's the truth that nobody wants to talk about, that you all know me, I don't mind talking from the truth. Um, also, we pay a lot of bills for things around this town, county that we shouldn't be paying. When Trump was elected, one of the things that he said was America first. And if you look at the demographics and who votes for who in this county, every time Trump was, he carried Chris County. Now, if he can have a philosophy American first, why can't we have a philosophy Cordial first? If people supported him to pull out of partnerships and things like that, that wasn't serving America well. Why don't we have the same right to pull out of partnerships that don't serve the city of Cordial well? That's usually what you get when you okay with somebody looking one way to have authority, but somebody that, that look another way, you're not okay with their decision, their authority. Um, so that's my thing, I think, um, talking about the budget, I watched the last meeting, which was about thirty plus minutes. Um, I wasn't able to attend, I was out of the country, um, and my concerns with this budget is we still need to take a look at some other things before, um, the commissioner have the votes, but before the commissioner vote on any budget, I think we need to put some things, uh, we need to have some agreements. We need to look at some personnel, we need to look at some fees, we need to look at some other things going on. And I know we have a short timeframe and, and, and especially the meetings. But I still think we need to look at things that go into place before we approve, uh, this budget. Um, because I think there's more cuts to be made and more revenue to be made as well. Uh, I don't think we should rush to do this budget, um, without looking at those things in more detail. And furthermore, I think we should, um, we gotta have a deeper dive into the budget, I don't like our process. We get the sheets, the department head and city manager do their job, they print it down and get the sheets. But the budget is the biggest policy you'll ever pass. Because if that money is not there for what you want to do, it usually ain't gonna happen. And so, we don't need to let the biggest policy that we pass year by year, just easily go by this board. This board is the policymaking, uh, agent in this town, um. Yeah, I think the city manager, that much cutting there is she wants, but it's our opportunity to make cuts. And I want to be clear, uh, when I came in office, the charter said that the chairman proposed the operating budget, this commission decided that that was a mistake and changed it. So, that's my spiel on the budget. Um, I actually agree with some of my opponents. What they're saying about the budget. That's right is right, wrong is wrong. And facts are facts. So, um, I asked this commission before we approve and pass the budget to actually take a look at some things, some more things in deeper detail than passing even what we have. Cause there's some, again, some that we can train even more. Any other comments? All right, any comments from the public? All right, so now do we have a motion to close public hearing?
So move.
Second.
It's been properly moved to second that we close the public hearing. Time I have is an I fourteen, all in favor, let it be known by voice for I.
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, do we have any speaker appearances? No one's up for a genuine, thank you. Okay. All right, so it's been a request from the city manager to go ahead and do the proclamation before the department head reports. So, the best way for you all to do that, because it wasn't approved on the agenda, when you all did, you then, uh, changed the agenda flow. So commissioners probably go ahead and want to make a motion to say we'll begin proclamation. Chairman, I make a motion that we begin by doing our proclamation for natural gas, the red ribbon week before we move on to the department head.
Second.
I explained properly moved to second that we, uh, we go ahead and do the proclamations, as commissioner said, all right? Any discussion before we begin? Saying I, um, all in favor, let it be known by voice for I.
Aye.
Three I's, motion carries. All right, proclamation, we have our resident reader.
Reader.
Reader, just one this morning, okay. Drink your water. All right, um, proclamation, public natural gas week, October fifth through eleventh. Do we have a motion in the seconds in this proclamation?
So move.
Second.
Second has been properly moved to second that we, uh, do this proclamation, all right, commissioner Owens, uh, I think, came in here, if you're wanting to. All right, step on up.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, sir, that'll work, I have what you want to do.
Proclamation, the city of Cordial celebrates National Public Natural Gas Week, October fifth through eleventh, two thousand twenty five. Whereas the city of Cordial will observe National Public Natural Gas Week from October fifth to, to eleventh. This annual nationwide event is intended to build public awareness about the value of having a community-owned natural gas utility. During this week, we will also educate residents on the environment and cost benefits of using low-carbon, reliable, and affordable natural gas appliances. Whereas there are approximately one thousand natural, public natural gas systems serving more than six million customers, these public natural gas utilities are not-for-profit retail distribution entities that are owned by accountable to the citizens they serve. They include municipal gas distribution systems, public utility districts, county districts, and other public agencies that have natural gas distribution facilities. And whereas your public natural gas utility is good for the community for many reasons, including local control. Having a public natural gas system gives a community local control over how gas is provided to homes and businesses. Decisions are made through citizens' participation instead of being made by distant city people, by people who do not understand local issues and who are primarily focused on profits instead of service. Competitive costs, in order to offer fair and competitive rates, public natural gas systems operate as a not-for-profit entity. Public natural gas systems do not face pressure to pay dividends to stockholders. Economic benefits, as a public natural gas system, we play a valuable role in helping communities broaden its tax base and in turn improve the local economy and increase jobs. Public natural gas systems ensure that local dollars stay at home. Customer service, as a not-for-profit entity, we focus on service rather than profits. Public natural gas systems are an integral part of a community. We maintain a close relationship with our customers, and as a result, we are successful in meeting our customers' needs. Now, therefore, the city of Cordial Commission does hereby proclaim the week of October fifth through eleventh as Natural Public Gas Week. In order to honor the city of Cordial Gas Department for its contribution to the community and to make its customers, owners, policymakers, and employees more aware of the city of Cordial Gas Department overall's contribution to the community. On this twentieth day of October, two thousand twenty five, City of Cordial Commission, Joshua Adarso, Chairman, Jay Wesley Rainey, Warford Vice Chairman, Best of Bill Shepherd, Commissioner Award One, Isaac Owens, Commissioner Award Three. Oh. I'm closer, I'm closer, I'm closer.
And, hold on, I want to say, Tina, I'd like to thank you for the work you do. You work really hard, and I see it in reflecting in what you put out and what you're doing to the whole department as well, and they're knowledgeable. They're knowledgeable. I remember the meeting we had at Public Works, um, I, I got to see a little bit of that, so thank you all for what you do.
Thank you.
All right, yes, sir, um, do we have a motion in the second for Red, uh, Ribbon Week?
So move.
Second.
It's been properly moved to second that we, um, do the proclamation for Red Ribbon Week, all right, all in favor, let it be known by voice for I.
Aye.
All right, motion carries, proclamation.
And Dr. Patricia Williams is here, along with others. Red Ribbon Week proclamation. Whereas Cordial Chris County values the health and safety of all our citizens, and during National Substance Abuse Prevention Month, we recognize the importance of ending and preventing substance abuse. And whereas we must remain vigilant in raising awareness about the harms posed by alcohol and drugs, including prescription opioids and their high potential for addiction, we can and we must provide families with the information, skills, and resources to stay safe and strong. As a county, we renew our commitment to improve individual and community health through increased education on the risk of substance abuse or investment in prevention, but help to further yield improved academic performance, healthier lifestyles, more successful citizens, and safer communities. Whereas substance abuse is particularly damaging to one of the most valuable resources, our children. And contributing factor in the three leading causes of death for teenagers, accidents, homicides, and suicides. Whereas it is the goal of the Red Ribbon Week Committee and Cordial Chris County to involve families, schools, government, businesses, churches, law enforcement agencies, and service organizations, organizations in all aspects of this campaign. And to establish an atmosphere that supports awareness, education, ongoing initiatives to prevent illegal drug use. And whereas the red ribbon was chosen as a symbol commemorating the work of Kiki Camarena, a Drug Enforcement Administration agent who was murdered in the line of duty and has come to represent the belief that one person can make a difference. And whereas the Cordial Chris County two thousand twenty five Red Ribbon Week campaign theme is positively drug-free, promotes family and individual responsibilities for living healthier, drug-free lifestyles without the illegal drugs or the illegal use of legal drugs. And now therefore be resolved that we, serving as members and leaders of Cordial Chris County, do hereby proclaim the week of October twenty fourth through thirty first as Drug Awareness Week. City of Cordial Commission, Joshua A. Dariso, Chairman, Jay Wesley Rainey, Vice Chairman, Warford, Best of Bill Shepherd, Commissioner Award One, Isaac Owens, Commissioner Award Three. And this is such an important proclamation because, um, we in our city of Cordial and county of Chris has experienced so much when it comes to suicide and our children who are battling with drugs. And we, um, have not always seen our children or seen these people who experience it until it's too late. But as we stand here today, it's important that we take a proactive approach to realizing that we must challenge our children not to depend upon the drugs that are being illegally put in our community to tear down our children. It's a different thing when you have to talk to a parent who has watched a child suffer through the ill effects of illegal drugs. But even worse, when they have to say goodbye to their child at the cemetery. And that has happened too much in our community, too many times, and so many parents have had to take their children to get the help that they need because we continuously overlook them. So this is not just something that we're doing because it's that time of the year, but it's something that we need to take hold to every day of every year. So thank y'all for that.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. But I brought red ribbons for the city, and I think that's plenty, it's very kind of her sake. You need more, just y'all, but thank y'all so much, it is very important that we continue to, um, to work on this every year, and even throughout the year, we need to work on that.
And we have a kickoff coming up on, uh, Monday at Chris County High School, so this is the first year in a while that we've done it at the high school, so it's at eight o'clock AM. So we invite you all to come in the gym, ladies and gentlemen. Show unity as we support our young people in our community, so we are a concerted effort to making sure that we do our best to put our young people first, so we want them to see that we are here to support them, so.
I would like the, um, any of you that can come to please come, because we want them to see the leadership there, um, and that they are supporting them. Cause a lot of these kids do not realize that they have more people behind them supporting them than they know. Thank you.
Thank you.
On that note, um, you all, ladies, I'd like to say, because this is very important, um, as commissioner Owens said. But, uh, I want to say that when we say something that's very important, we got to be careful how we deal with it. We have to get outside establishment, because establishment don't have the grips on the kids who struggling with this stuff. Uh, there's community organizations that have a hands on actual kids and community that are really struggling with this. And if we continue to do what establishment institutions do, then we're gonna continue to have the problem. It's time for innovation and creativity to reach these issues and these problems, um. Too often, agencies, organizations, government do the same old, same old, and really don't make the impact. We can't do that no longer. We gotta go back to grassroots. And really get in the community, work with people in the community. Um, I'm not big on lip servicing, you know, um, different things. It sounds good, but I can tell you, when I drive a walk in certain places, I, I know where the issue is. Uh, I, I would even say on record that, uh, you know, whether crime and, and drugs, sorry, it's really all loaded with just different types of drugs, depending on your financial status. But I also say some of the harder hitting drugs, and when you merge that with poverty, we gotta get in those communities if we really want to have an impact. Can't keep doing what we've been doing. Uh, and so, uh, that's, that's the important thing, um, because if we truly want to have an impact, we gotta get outside our comfort zones. And really have a true impact. All right? Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
At what time will we be at the high school on Monday? Eight?
All right, how do y'all want to proceed?
Mr. Chairman, can we make a motion to go on executive session for personnel?
Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, it's been properly moved to second that we go on executive session for personnel? Commissioner Shepherd, um, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Owens?
Yes.
Commissioner Rainey?
Yes.
All right. Motion carries, we should be in the, uh, executive session for personnel at nine twenty eight. I'm going to go ahead and get back into our regular session, so do we have a motion to come out of regular session and go back? I mean, come out of executive session, come back into regular session? So move.
Second.
All right, it's been properly moved to second that we come out of executive session, back into our regular session at eleven ten AM. Uh, Commissioner, how do you vote?
Yes.
Owens?
Yes.
I, and I vote yes. All right, so we're in it back into, uh, regular session at eleven ten AM. All right, we'll pick up with our agenda items, um, do we have a motion in the second for agenda item number three? So move.
So what? Are we skipping the department here?
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, my bad. Um, I got my tits on the two part of this, no, I'm ready, yeah. All right, we got a motion in the second, uh, let's entertain, um, get someone table that. Get someone make a motion to table agenda item number three. So move. No, yes, we just gonna table, so we can go back to the department heads. Or you want to pass it, just go back to the department head. We're in an active motion right now, that's because we're in an active motion, either we gonna have to carry it or we can table it and come back to it later, is that correct? Say it in turn. But it works the same as the table as well.
Same.
Yeah, sure.
As long as somebody makes a motion, then we're moving to the table.
Yeah, perfect, all right, so what do y'all want to do, draw a table? I make a motion, we, uh, table.
Second.
All right, it's been properly moved to second that we table agenda item number three, all right, uh, all in favor, let it be known by voice for I. All right, now we'll get back on track during the department heads community advancement, Mr. Hill. I remember.
Hello, I'm more. It's slightly, see, I'm more than just. Um, attended land bank meeting on the fourteenth, we discussed, uh, getting the land bank property appraised and, uh, we'll get, get back to everybody with that. Um, on the ninth, attended the ministers meeting, um, Ms. Watkins, Ms. Rose Watkins, or Ms. Watkins, uh, did a presentation on grant programs, um, very informative. Uh, attended the Main Street meeting, and we were discussing, uh, the twenty twenty six agenda, things like the, uh, Christmas tree light, lighting, uh, Easter egg hunt, um, concert, possible concert series, uh, and then, um, downtown, um, district pop-up shop possibilities. Attended the hazard mitigation meeting on October fifteenth over at the Emergency Operations Center. Um, they were doing updates, trying to make sure that if we had any, um, emergencies, we would be well equipped and, uh, positioned to help the residents of the city. I attended a GAVL meeting, and, uh, we talked about developing a regional land bank hub so that, uh, multiple land banks could work together to try to secure funding to do projects. And then attended the, uh, historical preservation meeting on the fifteenth. And it was to, uh, allow, or the request was to do some repairs to the home, uh, attached to the church. Saint Paul's Presbyterian Church at five fourteen West Fifteenth Avenue. Uh it was uh the uh, I'm sorry, and then we attend, also attended the uh historical preservation training with uh River Valley Regional Commission to bring the commissioners up to speed on some of the regulations required in uh historical preservation recommendations. And that's my report.
Any question for Mr. Hill?
Yes, sir. Um I read in our data for this week that um Chris County is opting out with the land bank, is that so?
That is on the tape. That is on the tape.
How would it, how would it impact the city and any other agents that participate in in the land bank?
What I would like to do is is hear back from the county before we, before I give you any information like that, because I don't wanna give you any misinformation. Yes ma'am.
Well, I'm just saying, I don't think county gonna come back here.
Okay, I I I I read somewhere doing that saying somehow literally told that they had opted out, it was late when I read it.
One of the members is opted out and one of the members is here, so did you, would you care to make a comment?
Heaven and love, sir.
I'm sorry, the city manager told me there was some consideration, but you can't have one without the county.
Right.
Correct, you could have two cities and that would be therapy coming in with Cordial. And I don't have any additional information at this point to give. Right, and that's why I didn't wanna give you any misinformation.
Who, what do you mean a person that is on the opt-out? Who, what do you, you said one of us here, who's?
Oh no, I'm saying that one of the mem- one of the committee members is here.
Oh right.
Yes, yes, he was here if he wanted to. Please forgive me, sir.
It's okay, so.
He's the vice chair, that's what I was thinking more than anything, so forgive me. But the question, city manager was, is the county opting out? And I told him I didn't have an answer at this point that we would be willing to keep.
And and it was mentioned during the meeting that that was something that uh was presented to them to out out of that and uh when I spoke to the city attorney yesterday, we had not received anything from the county attorney yet, is that correct? So.
And I think the wording that he used was that he had proposed to the county commissioners uh that they opt out.
Yeah, the county commissioner said he had proposed.
Without going to very much detail, I don't think it was of the authority, um the county fully understand what it was ever. Just from my attendance there, would you agree with Ed Morris? I don't think they ever kinda grasp, cause it's really a city problem. Generally, because how houses that need to be disposed of are generally in municipalities, not in counties. On the other hand, the counties are the ones with the tax digest. So it's uh, here we go.
I'll say this, cause it's not, it's isn't pleasant, so, but I'm gonna say it because it just needs to be said.
Thank you.
Um I don't like things being held over people's heads as a, as a poem, whether I'm on, I'm gonna stay in here, I'm not gonna stay in here. The truth is, is the land bank was not set up right. You don't have the appropriate people on there. You got people on there that don't wanna be on there, all because of how it was set up. So, the land bank is a tool, that is a vital tool to help rehabilitate the city of Cordial and deal with issues of back taxes, delinquent taxes, property to be able to roll on on the tax roll. It is a necessary evil that we have to have this school board, we have to have the approval of the city and the county to establish this land bank because it involves taxes from all government entities. However, this board needs to be restructured. It needs to have the appropriate people on it for it to function appropriately. Um the county has put zero money into the land bank, it's been funded by the city. It is the one thing the city, the city and the county get to get together on and discuss together and discuss problems of the community. And I'm disappointed in the action and to be honest with you, any commissioner on the county commission that votes to withdraw from the land bank is doing a
A disservice.
A disservice to the citizens of the city of Cordial and Chris Ca- and the county. Because this is much needed tax revenue and it's political, it's wrong and it disservices this community.
And
And I I I just need to stop there.
Well, and and to go, to go further with that, within that meeting, we asked, you know, what would be ju- the just cause um for the county wishing to come off? And really, there there was no viable answer um as to what it would be, other than if you just don't wanna do it. And I think again, as Commissioner Rainey just said, that's not fair to the citizens of the county or the city because when it be initially uh the authority, and we have to look at the clear words, um this is just not a committee. This is the authority and the authority that as 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 the chairman tells us all the time, they can use that word itself. And we can use it to benefit ourselves if it's used properly. And what is taking place is, is seeing is that people have been put there, for lack of a better word, just so they can say they were there. And it, and and we've been leading, trying to move forward and you know, there's a whole lot of conversation talking about the city and the county don't work together. But this was one of the authorities where we were actually trying to work together. But if we, if we walk away simply because we just don't wanna be there, there's a whole lot of places we don't wanna be, but we got to be there. And so, you know, that that in itself, but I'll I'll do what Commissioner Rainey said, I'll leave it there so we can, until we get a better. And you know, I'm not delicate at all, and so I'll be honest, brutally honest.
Sir.
Yes ma'am.
Other microphone down, it's an attorney, can he have one?
Very good, I saw it, as I can also.
Did you hear it?
Yes.
This what I would say. And this goes into my conversation about why I'm saying that we need to look at pulling out the I D C. Y'all, when y'all take these positions, y'all taking a position of authority. Y'all taking a position that you have to be able to wield authority and power. It's ugly, it ain't always pretty. As I told Commissioner Owens in our very first executive session after we got elected, one of my mentors told me this. He said, now that you're elected, you know, people gonna look at you and you gonna have to make some decisions that you may not be seen as a good person, but you gotta remember, people let you, they get politician. I said, eh, he said, no, 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 no. I know you like the word public servant, but people see you as a politician. And he said, because you need to be able to deliver for your people. Everybody won't always understand. And so, while I can disagree with the county, we have yet to learn on this commission. That when we get elected, we got the whole leverage. We have given in the city, one of the biggest issue I had with Wiggins, one of the reasons I ran against Wiggins, because I, I felt like when the city was at the table, they pushed, he pushed back and let other people make decisions about the interests of Cordial. When we go to tables, as representing the city of Cordial, if we ain't bringing Cordial's interest, we are doing our people a disservice. Politics ain't nice. Politics is understanding when you have that leverage, you gotta be able to use that leverage. That's what the county is doing. When we go out there in the community, we outside of these roles, just be nice, be kind. But for us to sit back here and keep thinking that we're playing a game that don't involve money, don't involve power, don't involve the sale of being able to get things done, we cannot be this naive. Because our city residents are looking for us to make good deals for the city. And as I always say, when we go and we can agree, we need to work with people. But when we can't agree, we need to look at that. So one of the reason I'm saying that we need to pull out the I D C is because it is an optional thing for us. We don't have much sway with the I D C. And I don't care if you don't like me. But I won't disrespect nobody in their pro- in their, in the capacity of which people put them in. I used to tell people all the time, I was Commissioner Rainey's last opponent. I went upset because he had his seat, we don't agree on a lot of things, but the people put him there and I respect the votes of the people. And so, at the end of the day, we're sitting here, you know, being nice and talking around. What the county is doing, the county is holding leverage over us. It's a free negotiation that we gonna have to go to pretty soon. But when we have done this city, we have not utilized all leverage. And we keep getting taken advantage of. There's a lot of things in this budget, at the end of the day, that we paying for that we need to look at. And it, even if we can make the decision to say we wanna stay in it, it is to get people at the table, I am surprised. And I will keep going back to this, how many people in this county vote for Trump, but then when we give similar logic, they have a problem with it. We should put people in the situation to come to the tables and renegotiate deals. That's our job. We can't get mad at the county for doing this. They only protect, they doing what they supposed to do for what they feel like right for them. But we got angles and positions as well that we can do the same thing. And we got to come to the table and work out and uh sometimes, if somebody leave, when you come to a table with somebody and one person real happy and the other person sad, that partnership's not worth nothing. Sometimes, and you notice in our personal relationships, you have to sit down somewhere and compromise. And that person ain't totally happy, you ain't totally happy, but you can work with it. And that's what we got to get to, being able to put people in position where they can work, where we're offering, we can work where they offer. And we keep being naive, the city gonna keep being taken advantage of. Pay this, pay that. As you haven't noticed on the I D C, the county and the power commission usually always gonna be alive, with what they want, they have meetings, they write by one another. And if they want something, the city is just a, a person that shows up there. We're not alive, interest wise. Again, it ain't personal or Grant. I think Grant does amazing job. But when I'm looking at, we're we're getting out of something versus what can function on their own, we paying a hundred thousand dollars almost, not to say it's but almost a hundred thousand dollars, I'm looking at, can we use that money somewhere else? Because I think I D C would be fine without us. Now, if it would debilitate the I D C, I went before, but I think Grant has managed land pretty well. When people come in, he, I, I never had a problem with how he structured the tax, uh the tax deals or whatever he do with. And I'm looking at us being in a particular situation, we're in with this budget, and that is a place to cut. We got to figure out what we want versus what we need to do. And at some point, we gonna have to look at, and and if it gets so bad, we gonna have to do what jobs do. I was gonna say government, we gonna have to start looking at making cuts that we don't wanna make. So why we can't start making the cuts that we can make now? Instead of waiting to kicking that can down the road, then have to make cuts that we don't wanna make. Cause that's what y'all gonna, that's the position y'all gonna put us in, and we keep being nice and saying we need to stand this, we need to stand that, we need to keep paying this person deal. They kinda don't have an interest to stand the land bank as they see it. Now, we can say we need to have an interest, but what they're looking at, that's a difference between the west side and the east side and the conditions of homes in the county. So when you looking at it from the county perspective, now as a county, so this is why I have to go outside, put myself in other people's shoes. When you looking at it in the county perspective, there's not as many de-leopardated homes. Now, it's land and dirt, I get that, cause I know that was Commissioner uh Owens over here thinking. But at the end of the day, when you, when somebody saying we doing fine without it, the city needs the land bank, and you're right. The county, the two cities can come together, you need another entity or what have you, legally or what have you, that's a smart play, thank you for that. But honestly, the county has no interest, cause they're not in the condition we're in to agree to be in the land bank. They're playing their interest. When are we gonna play all interests? That's the question. Cause we got some agreements with the county as well. We pay some stuff for the county as well. And I like most of the commissions in the county. Three of them, one ain't never been no off, the other no care for me, I don't care for them. But it's just when we have these meetings, we got to understand that we going with a cordial first mindset. And I, i- if someone keep jugging and pulling us, we got to understand what their relationship is. So I, I get it. I'll tell you the truth, if I was on the county, I'd probably do it too. Cause it don't line up with the county interest right now. Uh but I do think at the same time, uh I think uh the A R V uh mayor uh and their family in general um is, I don't know, hurry these, pass the torch down. Uh is one of the finest families you can meet or what have you. Uh so if you need me to talk with him, I can do that or what have you. Um but I will say that at the end of the day, we also need to be looking at options. See, I just explained, we didn't do five eighty-one because five eighty-one have some uncertainties, I'll be a five eighty-one. But this, what I wanna be a part of, is people who see options that are getting us close to where we can take without the uncertainties. We need to really take a deep look into the options that we have in the city and that the state of Georgia allows. That allows us to do the things that a land bank do, whether A R V are. The county comes in with us. There's a lot of laws and things that advantage, we go to train and we learn that stuff, right?
Yes, sir.
And if we ain't looking at those things and saying we may not dare do the land bank, cause guess what, it's out of our control. It's ever saying no, the county saying no, we just gonna do, not do it. So we need to figure out, okay, we can't officially do the land bank. But here's the thing, is we can line up and put together a new package that will get us close to being a land bank in that way. We don't need the county or air. So that's we, that's a conversation we really need to have. What can we do on our own and line it up and pass on this commission that the state allow to get us that close? Cause see, I'm good, I, this commission, I'm told we know to hold for years. You know what I do? I do whatever we can to come real close to what I still want. That's what you gotta do. That's how you rework in real magic. You used to say this.
Yes, sir.
What, what's your saying? Go ahead and tell it, what's your saying?
I'm, I'm not sure which way you talking about, I got a couple. I do have a couple.
Divide and
And succeed.
There you go.
Divide and succeed, cause it's not about conquering, it's about actually getting to the, you know, to the end game.
That's right, that's right. And there's multiple ways to get to the end. Maybe climb the mountain that we ain't ready to climb, but we can go down to the other that we got a stamina to climb.
And I will say, you know, I'd say as the uh exec for this and being on that Georgia land bank authority, one of the reasons I signed up to be on the committee for legislative, the uh in the governmental committee was to give Cordial a seat at the table, because Atlanta's gonna be there, Macon's gonna be there, Savannah's always going to be at the table. But when you get a seat at the table, it makes a difference because then you have a voice. Savannah's always going to be at the table, but when you get a seat at the table, it makes a difference, because then you have a voice.
I don't have nothing else. Anything else from this here? Thank you, sir. Thank you for looking for other options. And reach out to him if you need to speak with the Hugby. Good morning.
Good morning. How's everybody doing? Hi, you have a copy of my report in your packet? I do wanna point out that, um, we did have a small increase in the utilities, but we also had a decrease in disbursement, so we're holding our own. I know finances is a big topic, the budget is a big topic, but the sky's not falling with the city of Cordial. We, when the city manager says she's conservative with the city money, she is. We run the numbers every day. And bills are coming in and they're being paid. We're doing fine, we're holding our own, and we should be fine till taxes and business license start coming in. So now, don't get me wrong, money's tight, but we're, we're doing fine, and that's all I have to say. Any questions? And we haven't borrowed any money. I keep saying that, but that, that, we haven't done that.
Thank you.
Okay.
I do have one question.
Oh, yes, sir.
Sorry. Some people have noticed a little bump in their water.
Well, we haven't gone up on anything.
You ain't gotta say no more.
Now, they may see a little bump because they paid late and they got late charges, I don't know, but we haven't raised any fees.
Thank you, that's all I need.
They're using more water. Any more questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Chief, what you got for the morning? Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
How are y'all? All right, goals and accomplishments. Goals, as always, provide the best possible service to the citizens and businesses of Cordial through professionalism, training, quick response, effective emergency mitigation, community risk reduction programs, and community engagement. Accomplishments. Um, I wanna start with, uh, we attended a presentation at the invitation of Sheriff Hancock, from Sheriff Judd Smith, and that was at South Georgia Technical College. And he gave us a presentation of all the issues that they faced as public safety with the, uh, Appalachian High School mass shooting. Um, we came out of that, uh, with a little bit of insight, and I think what, as a group, as a public safety group, kinda came out of that feeling like the training that we do yearly, probably has us on track to be as prepared as you possibly can for one of those situations. We certainly hope that never happens, but we are doing everything we can to prepare. We attended the Faith in Blue ceremony, and as y'all know, police and fire has a little bit of a friendly competition, but I do wanna sincerely say, uh, to Chief and Sarge, um, thank you for everything you do and your family does, sacrifices you make to protect our community. Uh, I was at the Fire Fusion Conference, first of last week in South Carolina, a lot of good information. Um, lot of new equipment available out there, but again, I, I left there feeling like, with the things that we have in place and the things that, that are in the near future, that we're in great shape. Um, I think, uh, we are, we are in great shape, and I appreciate the commission for helping us with that. Uh, attended the Adopt a Angel meeting yesterday, Christmas is right around the corner, we'll be involved in that again. Uh, we'll also be partnering with law enforcement for the Red Ribbon Event Friday. And then before I end, I just wanna recognize a couple firefighters like I do every month. First one is Abby Patterson. She did get her firefighter one certification, her hazmat certification, so she's now official. Um, she was a certified volunteer, so she qualified for the bridge program. But during that process, the finish line kept changing. And so there were several times that I had to call her in the office and say, I, I know we thought we were there, but we're not, I need you to do one more thing. And she did, and she did it every single time, and, uh, I'm proud of her. And then Cody Griffin, who, um, has been with us a little over two years. He did get his E M T certification, um, he worked hard, passed the national registry test, which is not an easy test to pass. Uh, but Cody's just one of those guys that shows up every day, ready to go to work. We have to make him take time off, he's always anxious to take overtime if we have that available. And, uh, when we had to move some people around on shifts, I hesitate to do it, because people, you know, their families are kinda built around those shifts, they're part-time worker, anything they do, so when they change shifts, it's difficult. And I called him in the office, cause he was one that I need to move, and he just said, whatever I need to, Chief, I'll do it. So I do wanna recognize him, and that's all I have.
Any questions for our chief?
Thanks.
All right, any trouble? Good morning to you, Mr. Wade.
You have my report in your packet, and I'm gonna try to be very brief. Um, as you all know, we had, held a lunch and learn back on September the fifteenth with sixteen employees attending. This is an addition to the report, just came about yesterday, got it finalized, but we'll also be holding a breast cancer awareness lunch and learn. This will be on October the thirtieth at twelve noon here in the, uh, Police Department's Training Room, we should have gotten the email invitation of that yesterday. Um, flu vaccines are also available at city's clinic at no cost, that's for all employees and, and that's covered under the city's insurance plan, so if you're not going by there and got your flu shot, encourage you to do so. Updates to the city's website, um, job postings, and we're hiring Wednesday videos are still occurring weekly. Um, and we're continuing to post all our vacancies on various platforms, including N D and G O G A. And then lastly, I found out yesterday as well, that, uh, this week we'll be wrapping up our, our hardware, um, upgrade and the data transfers, and that's all I have. Unless you have any questions?
Any questions for Mr. Wade? Quick question, do we hire Wednesday videos? I think I saw them, what do they normally? Do, what's the setup?
Um, Mr. Smart will probably answer this better than I can, as far as what they do. Let's just highlight the city, just to highlight the different positions that we have available. They're very brief, uh, it's probably a minute or so, and it just hits the high points as far as which positions are available, and if you wish to apply, uh, the way you do so.
But it's more like screening tips, right? It's not like a person on there, right?
There's video clips of the city, various departments. And Mr. Smart narrates it.
Right, right, um, maybe think about talking, having people talk about the positions, so you can put a face on it, turn more than just print text up there, cause that's what I saw, it, it's what I, I thought it was, or what have you, and I think, one of the effective things that we can do around this is actually talk about where that position does from the high ass bank to the city. Um, you know, just putting a face where someone was drawing something or not, there's someone that they can see themselves doing it, or see the person that's there doing it as well.
Right.
And so I think if we can add faces to certain things, that would be, actually, that's all, thanks.
Thank you.
All right. Hey, Nessa, how you doing, Mr. Smart?
We're doing good.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, um, our goals, um, report accurate information for the court and public. To aim, um, efficiently adjudicate cases, process cases quickly, and maintain accurate records. Complete the court docket for the judge in a timely manner, um, strive to provide access, accessible services, maintain integrity, and ensure accountability. And our accomplishments, accomplishments, we, all dockets in court, disposition are turned to state on time.
Great, you all right? All right, next is planning and community development. Starb, how you doing?
Good, thank you. I think we're at, oh, we're still like, good morning. So, good morning, Chairman and fellow commissioners. Good morning, so, um, the goals for the planning and community development department is to update our zoning map, and to continue updating our com- um, community work program. Also to install the, um, the Esri software, so we can update our zoning map. And the other goal is to, um, this is my goals and accomplishments, I'll get to accomplishments in just a second. And the other, um, goal is to train staff, so we can have suspension planning for it. And in terms of accomplishments, we have, I have met Marcia Toussaint, my assistant, um, admin- administrative assistant. We met with the operating department to update our community work program, so that will be brought to you, um, after it's reviewed by our city manager. We have, yay, installed the Esri software, met with the River Valley Regional Commission. We actually have a map of Cordial on digitally on our, um, software, and we're updating the streets and the zoning classifications, I'm very excited about that. We are preparing for meeting number two of the Seventh Street Corridor Redevelopment Plan. That meeting will be held October the twenty second from six to seven thirty P M. So that will be a follow-up meeting, and we will be addressing some of the questions and concerns that was raised at that meeting, and River Valley Regional Commission will be conducting the presentation again. We have two proposed text amendments that are coming before, that has come before planning commission, and will later be coming before the city commissioners on block dwellings, and as well as defense ordinance or yard regulations. And, um, I met with, or had a conversation with Maurice and Monica Main Street on conducting a pop-up event for nonprofit organizations. Um, and so that discussion is still moving forward. And in terms of meetings, I attended a C D B G Community Block Grant Meeting last week, which was awesome, about how we can obtain various grants for the, for the city, very awesome meeting. Um, I've attended the meeting with the Economic Development Group about, um, grants here in the city as well, for infrastructure and sewer improvements. Attended the Hazards Mitigate, Medigation Plan Meeting, and that will conclude my report. Okay, great, thank you.
Good morning again. Uh, some of the goals and accomplishments from the Police Department. We will continue to provide professional law enforcement services through our hiring process, training, and self-accountability. Currently, there are two applicants in the hiring process for the position of patrol officer. Madison Law was hired as an animal control officer. Our two cadets are in their fifteenth week of the police academy. And again, that's, uh, they're making it tougher, but our folks are doing real good. Uh, develop strategies to attract more experienced officers. We are continuing to promote our sign boards and on our Facebook page. We anticipate attending future career fairs to provide hiring information for applicants interested in working with our department. Also, our efforts include partnering, partnering with professional organizations such as the Georgia Association of Chiefs of Police, Noble, the National Organization for Black Law Enforcement Executives, regional police academies, and other local and state affiliated organizations. We will continue with the community, we will continue to connect with the community through community-related events, increasing public contacts, and through partnering with local groups and businesses. The Police Department has partnered with Cordial Main Street to host Downtown Spooktacular in twenty twenty-five, and I hear that's always a big event, and we'll make it bigger this year. It will be held Thursday, October the thirtieth from five thirty P M till seven P M at the Sam Short Line Parking Lot. We will be participating, and y'all, we've seen this this morning, in several Red Ribbon festivities. The Red Ribbon Road Block is on October the twenty-fourth at nine A M at the city limits on Highway four fifteen. The Red Ribbon kickoff is on October the twenty-seventh at eight A M at the Chris County High School, is that the right date, y'all? We had the date this morning. We will be going to the Fort Valley Head Start on October twenty-ninth, and the Chris County Pre-K on October thirty-first. The department will also be participating in Tractor Supplies Hometown Hero Events on Saturday, November the first at nine A M. We will continue to make advancements toward obtaining the excellence in policing certification with the larger goal of state certification. We are currently working with and orienting Tomiska Jones to the initial stages of state, the state certification process. Uh, Code, uh, Compliance Division and go, with goals and accomplishments. The Code Division will continue code enforcement efforts to increase code compliances in all warrants. This will provide more attractive and presentable neighborhoods for the current citizens, future citizens, workers and travelers, with the hopes to attract new businesses, industry, and potential residents to the city. The Code Division will also continue sending codes officials to advanced training and certification seminars through the International Code Council of the Georgia Association of, Association of Code Enforcement, with the hopes that each code official becomes certified in multiple inspection categories. The next available conference will be held in the spring twenty twenty-six, but we will continue looking for local classes pertaining to codes. Uh, address blighted commercial and residential properties through education, code enforcement, private funding, grant opportunities, and working relationships with reliable certified contractors. We are working on at least five different properties, and more will be added as we close out the others. We are processing them, we are processing them. This was so it does not overload our systems. Increasing our social media presence and utilizing other innovative ways to relay information and announce code issues and problems. The aim is to educate, and we keep talking about this word educate, and keep the public informed about code-related issues that concern them. Code officers have been tasked with coming up with new ideas on how to better utilize the social media pages that have become a little stagnant. Uh, just a note of, uh, importance. Code enforcement recently assisted in relocating an at-risk senior citizen who had been living in severely unsafe conditions. Once she was safely moved to an assistant living facility, the home was immediately condemned due to its uninhabitable state. Codes will continue working closely with the immediate family to ensure that the property is either rehabilitated or removed, prioritizing both safety and the well-being of the surrounding communities. Uh, Code Enforcement, this is part of our accomplishment. All, uh, completed all inspections for all these and cost cutters, making it possible to open on schedule. That was a big event, it was, it was real happy, uh, a memorable event. They are also working on inspecting on the old cost cutter building for a new building coming to Cordial. Code Enforcement continues inspections on Christian Homes, and they are on schedule to open before Thanksgiving. Animal control. Uh, goals and accomplishments for animal control, get more animals rescued, and that certainly is a big, uh, effort of ours, rescued and adopted by being more active in the community and on social media. Rescue adoptions are holding study. Unfortunately, sign overs and comp complaints Rescue adoptions are holding steady, unfortunately, sign overs and comp complaints of stray cats have increased tremendously. Work towards implementing a volunteer program at the shelter. We are working on a schedule and paperwork to have volunteers. Several people have inquired and are very interested in helping out at the shelter. Make shelter improvements, grates for drains, seal the floors, replace rusted kennel pipes, add a few more kennels outside. Dogs are moving and kennels will start being repaired on the inside. The tops are off and fixing to start the inside repairs. Uh actively promote animal welfare, spay and neuter vaccinations. Correct shelter housing and kennel ordinance control. Also, again, here we're talking about educating people about proper shelter and living conditions of these animals. Uh host events with the hope to bring awareness to the shelter, animal health and welfare and increasing donations. We have been helping people decrease the number of unst sterilized animals. Microchips are being are big hit with several people. Come when several people come to get their animals chipped. Uh we received a big donation of pet food from Tractor Supply. Jack probation and several citizens buying and leaving for us to pick up at Tractor Supply. And I think that completes our list of goals and objectives and accomplishments and future efforts. Any questions?
Yes, sir, I have one. On the roadblock um for Red with Red ribbon week.
Yes, ma'am.
Scheduled for the twenty fourth at nine A M on forty one south.
Yes, ma'am.
For the public as well, just for law enforcement uh officers or anyone potentially.
I think the it is for everyone, it is for uh the public and y'all help me out on this one.
Public safety will be there um putting red ribbons on cars as they pass if they want.
And are we taking up donations also?
We haven't in the past.
Okay, alright. Alright, and roadblocks doesn't mean we y'all take it, thanks, thank you.
Any any other questions?
Um when you give your report, sometimes if you just hit the high points.
The high point.
You don't have to read.
The entire thing, okay, alright.
Yes, I know you knew, so that's a quick thing.
Thanks for that advice.
Because if we have questions, we will ask, we we read them beforehand, uh why, you know, but we will ask questions.
Okay, I'm al- always cognizant of the fact that it'll be also on YouTube, but thank you.
Alright. That's clever words. How are you?
I'm good, I'm good. Uh we have only one update and it comes from goal number six to prevent groundwater infiltration into the city sewer system. And I have Michael Mitchin with E S G here, he's gonna get an update if that's okay, before that goal.
Good morning. Get to catch y'all right before lunch. Yes, uh sorry for missing the last meeting, I was out of town at a uh kind of a little training thing. Um ARPA Phase One, as y'all know, last time it was complete, we were waiting waiting on last pay request. It has been submitted to get approved and get that payment sent in. ARPA Phase Two, they are working on line G, which is Thirteenth Avenue. If you look at the plans, they're doing the C I P P, so they're actually in there now, starting to line the pipes. And working their way through town, uh it slows down a little bit when they get to that process because it takes a little longer. But they are still working on it steadily, they're here every week, so. Other than that, guys are doing great. Knock on wood, but the weather changed, the water leaks haven't got crazy, but it will be coming, so. That is it.
Appreciate you, man.
No problem, thank y'all. You have any questions? Thank you.
That's it, no questions for public works.
I don't know if this is a public work of the city management, so I'm not sure.
Okay.
I heard that was an agreement. Uh the waste and what's going on in the hose and coffee. Um now, is that a question for, so what's that a question for you? Yeah, someone said um there was an agreement made between the city, the Chamber of Commerce. Uh where they were looking for um they were asking for citizen donations.
Keep Chris beautiful?
Keep Chris Beautiful, that's right. And I know Keep Chris Beautiful gets some money from us through the chamber for certain things. And so I know that that went because of work, so I made that's a conversation we had when you get your report.
I don't know anything about an agreement that was, it's called the Chamber and the City. Yeah. Because I don't know what type of agreement it was.
They said they made an agreement with those entities and. Um basically, uh had reached an agreement that they will pick up the trash there.
Who keep Chris beautiful?
I think the way it was said, the city express disposal, keep Chris Beautiful in the chamber.
I have to look into that because I don't know anything about that. I do know that I received a call from the general manager and I sent that information to you all. That because of the complaints and what was posted on Facebook, that they were gonna go and clean it up and add that cost. To the bill that is already owed to them and place a lien on the property, but other than that, I have to check with the chamber, I don't know anything about it.
Okay.
Because at some point in time, somebody's gonna be paying for that, and I know, I don't know anything about it.
We are taking contributions because the city pays the bills for uh residents. All, I mean, when on the trash can, we pay the bills, but that's a commercial account. And that commercial account hasn't been paid for months.
And that's a, yeah, it's.
But it's a commercial account, totally separate, don't run through the city.
Yeah.
So the city don't pay that bill, but Express, Keep Curse Beautiful became became concerned because of the living arrangements for the residents. But Express can't continue to hold the money, can't continue to hold the money. So they're taking contributions to help offset the cost to Express disposal.
No, you said Express disposal can't continue to hold the money.
Hold, no, hold their bill, they're on, they're owed thousands and thousands.
Okay.
And that, but that that bill doesn't run through the city at all.
No, it's a commercial account because residential accounts are billed on the utility bill. And we pay Express Disposal, but the hose and call is responsible for paying that bill because it's um.
And they're supposed to put some lien on the property.
Right.
Yeah, but moving forward, they were trying to find a way to keep it all going.
Okay, and so Chris Beautiful is uh accepting donations.
Correct.
Okay, because I was getting ready to say, I know I have not received.
Express disposal.
I gotta take on that, but I I just ignore it because I'm not gonna make it long.
And people, I'll try to say less. I'll say less. I think I'm not my talking either.
In the future, sir, I think we need to consider that like hose of better than the other entity. That we have meters there, you know what I'm saying? So they can bring their own water bill there and they can be charged, or picking up over the can, and then we catch it, I mean. When you go back through that and clean up their next two days, it's like a mess.
Well, I but I think the way their rent is set up is that they pay for those services, so that's a private entity. So they pay for those services with their rent, right?
It's something she'll pay for their rent. My nephew was raised up there.
Yeah, they pay for those services in their rent.
What I also got, I I really know, this is said out, like if they don't, if you don't catch it up, they're gonna be without water again, I mean, you know, so.
I I think this is one of the things that. When it comes to this issue, I think we got to figure out another thing. How do we use the authority we have again to take care of this issue, will we use leverage? We give a lot of money to that waste company. And I know when we do a construction, anybody do a house construction, you can rent something for a certain amount of money. Uh leave it out there for a single amount of time and say, hey, just throw everything in here. We got property right across from where water tower exists, right across from that place. I believe that they can come pick up their trash cans or their dump sites. And we work something out with express disposal because all the money is given to them anyhow, or what have you. And ask some people to go take their garbage, open that, they have for temporary, because it's everywhere anyway. And if we can centralize a dumpster and what we're expressing disposable to quit something there. You know, and I'm not talking about a large guy because we pound enough, they're saying we need one for for you. Because we have a contract that comes up every year with them, and the only waste place we can go to. Use leverage and say, hey, we need you to set this out here and we need you to take this because we have service for people or what have you. Do us do us a good, in 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 bigger places, most of the time, when a company get a contract. They give a community good back. And we need them to give a community good back right now, you gotta start thinking like that. And we have property right there across the road. So we ain't gotta ask nobody to, you know, put a dumpster out there. And I know saying we're right there in the middle city, people are not gonna throw it right in that dumpster, they made the, they doing that anyway. They're doing that anyway. So I think we we probably need to have a meeting with the express disposal and see what they can give us to solve this problem. Because it is hopefully temporary and short term. But if we don't act and use the leverage and authority we have that's already in place in the city. Uh be because I think things are hard, you have some citizens for donations and people don't trust. Trying to say less, people don't trust making donations to anywhere and they don't necessarily know their money going or what have you. And so I think we can do a little bit more in that situation than just waiting till they show up and answer our court stuff. I think we can be a little bit more assertive and get a dumpster over there or what have you. Where we at and ask the people to start throwing their stuff in the dumpster um that express disposal will provide or what have you. Uh I'm I can't even think anything with the water right now, but I don't know, that's gonna be a ugly situation. But I will say, at the end of the day. The people that live there are all residents. This is no fault of their own. So we may have to make some decisions that are untraditional. To do what we need to do and figure out, set a turn, what legal um relief can we take on that? But I know.
Soon this is a housing development, some kind of.
It's a private housing development. Right, right, that they charge per, you know, but. And these people water get cut off and they have kids that go to school, we ought to water supply.
I I'll I'll I've had this problem.
So let's let's talk, please, this week about that.
Okay, thank you, uh.
Sorry, Marcia, didn't get into that in the scrap, but I I didn't, you know, sometimes that stuff might be public or sometimes it don't, alright. Social media and Mark.
I think it's officially good afternoon. Honorable Chairman Commissioners, uh thank you for letting me uh be with you today, you have my report in your packet. Only thing that I have to uh add to that, I'll be leaving this afternoon to go to the uh. G M A Communicators Conference down at uh Saint Simons, I'll be there through uh Friday afternoon, looking forward to. Uh visiting with my counterparts across the state, learning some new things to bring back to the city. And other than that, that is my report and we'll try to answer any questions should you have any.
Any question for Mr. Smart? Alright, thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I don't believe we have Mr. Debbie on representative U C N T.
Mr. Chairman, I'm thinking how like from her report, number five, which is the water lab inspection on October twenty first. By E P D and according to Debbie, she hoped that they lived through that.
That is a Debbie coming.
Yes, so that's uh what we have upcoming in uh in U C N T.
Number five. I know why I read every report. Alright, thank you, alright, um. I T don't believe we got versus any either.
No, they are busy uh today because I I mentioned to you all the installation of thirty one uh computers. Uh that includes one laptop and that is necessary because of the um Windows ten support. And of course, um you know, Bobby was in the midst of uh the installation, you know, when the unexpected would pass. And so we, you know, we, that is something that requires, something that is is needed. And their uh focus uh today is in the finance department because the power went out and I sent you all the texts about that. I think it was Thursday and after that, that register did not come back up. And we had been here and if it goes down, you know, again, we're not sure if we can bring it back up, and so we're at that point now. And so uh scheduling the installations to uh to start today is right on target. And again, the focus is in the finance department, that is a critical area in terms of, you know, our financial information. And of course, you know, our customers go and pay and and just having one register. Uh even with one registered, the finance department, they were, they had a plan in place and was able to work through all of that. And so uh once the installation occurs in finance department, I think the next critical department is the police department. And so they will be going around the city addressing all of those issues um at that point. That's how I like my T.
Any questions for our T? Okay, we'll move into our specific agenda items, uh I need a motion to take from the table, agenda item number three.
Second.
It's been properly moved to second that we take from the table, agenda item number three, alright. Commissioner, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Rainey?
Yes.
And I vote yes, alright, so, alright. Now do we have two, we're in discussion for agenda number three, right, did it vote? It's getting late myself, so. Alright, we're in discussion for agenda item number four, you had to use a motion to take it off the table. Alright, considering approved event for a community fall festival, first read, uh it's been reviewed. Um on October fifteenth, alright, in the discussion? Saying no, she'll proceed to vote, Commissioner Rainey?
Yes.
Commissioner Shepherd?
Yes.
Alright, um. The twenty fifth is on Saturday.
So, oh yes, it is Saturday.
We got, we got traffic flood, okay, alright, I vote yes. And motion carries. Alright, consider uh agenda item number four, considering approved renewal alcohol license exception. Add it, it's been uh reviewed by police, uh interim police chief. Alright, do we have a motion to say for agenda item number four?
So move.
Second.
It's been properly moved to second that we uh considering approved these items, in the discussion? Saying no, she'll proceed to vote, Commissioner Rainey?
Yes.
Commissioner Shepherd?
Yes.
Yes. Motion carries, it is approved, alright. Agenda item number five, consider and approve a resolution for five for the adoption of vegetable for this year, twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six. Uh do we have a motion?
So move.
Second.
Alright, it's been properly moved to second, it will consider and approve resolution provided for the adoption of the budget, in the discussion? Alright, saying no, she'll proceed to vote, Commissioner Shepherd?
Yes.
Commissioner Rainey?
Yes.
Alright. I'm gonna say nay on that one, alright. Uh nope, vote being cast. Agenda item number six, consider and approve new appointment city community clubhouse coordination board, do we have a motion in the second? Second, alright, alright, it's been a motion under second, but considering agenda item number six, in the discussion? Mr. Brown wouldn't agree.
Yes.
Okay, alright, good, yeah, alright, in the further discussion? Alright, saying no, she'll proceed to vote, Commissioner Owens?
Yes.
Commissioner Shepherd?
Yes.
Commissioner Rainey?
Yes.
Alright. Um motion carried is approved. Consider and approve the engineer proposal for Corde and Swoop uh for the UV filtration system. Alright, do we have a motion?
Take the vote, that should be disinfection system, not filtration.
Disinfection.
Yeah, disinfection system.
Alright, let me repeat that. Agenda number seven, consider and approve the engineer proposal for quarter and swoop uh for UV disinfection. Alright, do we have a motion in the second? Second, it's been properly moved to second that we consider and approve agenda item number seven, in the discussion? Alright, saying no, she'll proceed to vote, Commissioner Rainey?
Yes.
Shepherd?
Yes.
Owens, yes, motion carried is approved. Alright, agenda now, uh agenda item number eight. Uh discussion of Seven Street Park, and do we have a motion in the second? Alright, seeing when the sounds are silent, we do not. Alright, agenda item number nine, discussion, uh change thorough avenue between twenty fourth and and um. Forward to Clay Hill Avenue, do we have a motion in the second for agenda item number nine? It's been properly moved to second, alright, that will discuss this item, open for discussion? Yeah, we we she said that those that are current owners. They won't be up outside, it'll be up for the school board.
Sure call, y'all have a street naming committee. And y'all could send, if there's some hesitation about it, you could send them for a recommendation if you wanted to. Consideration. I would expect you'd have to tell them that they're on the committee, we don't do this that often, people forget. There is that committee.
Um I'm gonna say it, Ross. Well, it don't have to be Ross from saying, you know, we gonna make the decision anyway, we send it to the committee, that's what you say we're gonna do anyway, that would just be some time. I understand the reason why not to, not to, um. You know, what what we, how we made the decisions, but we have since done it. Since I've been on this commission or what have you. And I do think there will be times and occasions where uh some of the things we can do, uh we should do. Or what have you, so that's just my opinion uh on that or what have you, uh.
I didn't know Mr. Clay here personally, uh because you know, he is qualified. And I'm sure all of you are, you know, well, I I trust your judgment, so I mean, I always. So.
Alright, who are the motion second? That we named? Change thorough avenue between twenty fourth Avenue, Ogden Road to Clay Hill, uh Boulevard. I like Avenue. I like. Well, we have, alright, we we have a second on that, thank Commissioner Shepherd. Okay, perfect, alright, open for discussion, the motion is second, how big? May to change it to Clay Hill Avenue, alright, any discussion? Saying no, she'll proceed to vote, Commissioner Owens?
Yes.
Commissioner Shepherd?
Yes.
Commissioner Rainey?
Yes.
Alright, motion carried is approved, alright. Uh that brings us to the city manager's report.
Good afternoon, city manager's report, October twenty first, twenty twenty five. I will first start by highlighting some uh past events, of course, on October ninth. Uh we had the ribbon cutting for Aldi's uh in their grand opening. And as you can see in the first photo, even though it's small, the line was down to um. Past dial analysis center down to the street, but of course, it was a very good event. Uh good turnout and uh it was great to see the community out uh early. Waiting for uh a free shopping bag and for those who uh got in line early enough, they received a uh. A gift card and so.
That's what that line was for, okay. Times are tight because I was like, everybody had a problem. And and I was, I was, I didn't have service everywhere where I was, but I was leaving, I was like. Okay, that makes sense now. But they gave me some nice gift cards, two hundred dollar gift card. Financial regulation, if y'all got money to get there, y'all got reported.
Oh no, oh no, no. We were not in line earlier than, enough of that. I think I read where the first person arrived at four A M. Yes, at four A M.
And somebody would be, you're being sterilized.
Yeah, but it was, it was a great event, we had the opportunity to uh uh. Look through and walk through the store before the grand opening, laid out well uh. Good prices, so hopefully uh and I think it is a great asset to the community. On October ninth, uh we had the faith based ministers meeting. Uh uh Ms. Watkins presented information uh to the ministers and hopefully they will be able to take and share. Uh some of that information uh that she presented to them. On October tenth, we had the National Faith and Blue Event along with the Faith Base Ministers Association. And as you can see here, we had uh different ministers participate in the uh program. Uh from uh local churches here in the community. Also during that event, we uh lit a candle and uh said a prayer for Naisha. Walk uh Naisha who is still uh missing and so uh. From my understanding, the local authorities are still working diligently on that case and. Hopefully we'll come to some type of resolution soon uh regarding Naisha. Uh on October the eleventh, uh the one hundred mile peanut picking, P I C K I N, yard sale was held. And as you can see, very good participation uh with the yard sale. We have an upcoming event on October twenty seventh, tomorrow evening, six P M. To seven thirty P M, the second public meeting for the Seventh Street Corridor. Corridor of urban redevelopment plan and again, uh six P M at the community clubhouse. Upcoming events for our youth, let me go back one. Of course, B G E S, City on the Move College and Financial Aid Fair will be held on Thursday, the twenty third, from ten to one P M. And again, uh juniors and seniors from uh Chris, Dooley, Pulaski, Will Cox and Worth Counties. Are invited to attend that event and then on November fifteenth, Greater New Birth Family Outreach Ministry. Will have another event for uh children, eight, well, kids ages kindergarten through twelfth grade. And then on. Today is the twenty first, we have a blood drive at the community clubhouse for those who uh. Like to donate blood, that event is today from one A to six P M. And then uh I know this next flyer is busy. But it's it, it is the Georgia diaper distribution program through Unity Community Action Council, which was formerly known as West Central Georgia. Uh and I know Commissioner Shepherd, you are on that board, any additional information you would like to share regarding the diaper distribution program?
Yes, please, the diapers are free for two years without a problem going on. On last Saturday, we had a large baby shower for anybody in the state of Georgia, we gave away diapers all sizes. So um it must still make the office. So if anyone in need of diapers for children two and under, please call four seven eight, three one three, four one two two. And I suppose this is um. Camille Vickers or either Mrs. Zander, Mrs. Zander is the person over at Spurware. Mrs. Vickers is the, is the director up there, so we have plenty of diapers to give away. So please come and get the for all kinds, first kind of the welfare taxpayer, I'm proud of my county. So we got eleven counties available for their distribution, please come and get these diapers.
So Commissioner Shepherd, regarding the diaper distribution, I see the offices in, um what is that, Mona, Mona? So do they have to drive there or will they be delivered if they call that number?
If they can't, if they got an online program where you sign in for your little, you know, you know, your cash and then like they can pick them up or. We got some people calling who work here, we're gonna make down for me, you know, I got some here, either I go for the one for you, no matter, you know, you understand I need them. But we have two people calling who works there, so I I haven't had a problem yet.
Okay, alright, okay, thank you. Okay, um next, the uh Rail Fan Festival will be held on November eighth from ten A M to four P M. Uh that is normally a a a good event, huge turnout from the rail fans. And then also Sam Short nine will be running uh that day as well. As was previously mentioned, uh downtown Spook Tackler will be held on October thirtieth from five thirty to seven P M. And of course, that event is is always a a great event, huge turnout. Upcoming events, uh Boarders on Appeals Meeting will be held tomorrow uh at ten, no, I'm sorry, Thursday. The twenty third at ten A M here in the courtroom. A propel meeting has been scheduled for Thursday, October thirtieth at eight thirty A M at the Power Commission. And then on October thirtieth at ten A M, we will have our annual city hall pink out photo. So we're looking forward to that today. Looking forward to that event on the Thursday. Uh just a few updates right now, the dumpster location is open Monday through Friday from eight A M to four P M. And on Saturday from nine to noon. Uh we are in the season, as I mentioned before, regarding the alcohol um renewals and so uh again, just make sure you. Uh allow enough time so that you can be fingerprinted, get the results back. And still have time for us to place approval or the re uh renewal on the agenda for approval. Uh the city will hold a property tax sale on Tuesday, November fourth, that is a city commission meeting. It will be held out front on the uh out front of city hall and so we, there will be a busy day, it's the election day. Property tax day and then city commission meeting, so just wanna make you all aware of that. Um I've been told that the cabinet is expected to arrive this week for the drive through window. I will confirm when I see it, but uh right now, we're still waiting on it. And then um just to mention a few other highlights of. And I mentioned it before, on twelfth avenue, the parking spaces have been restripped. On the south side facing the Power Commission and then we will move over to the other side, once the sidewalk has been repaired. And so we are repairing sidewalks in various areas around the city. I don't know if this was mentioned earlier when I had to step out, um but I spoke with uh Mr. McCarthy. Uh at Southwest Georgia and uh the Christian Homes Development was moving. Good, they were on target, but when I spoke with him, because of the federal shutdown right now, it's on hold, so. Hopefully, you know, once everything just worked through in Washington, uh they'll be able to get back on track. And then um Janice received her certified city certification. Um she had an appointment ahead to leave, but wanted to make you all aware of that as well and then. And uh on November fourth, again, election day, so just wanna highlight uh what uh the dates highlighted in yellow. Which are advancing person voting, again, uh the fourteenth through the thirty first, from eight A M to six P M, Monday through Friday. Uh the next opportunity to vote on Saturday is October twenty fifth from nine A M to five P M. And then, of course, uh election day is November fourth. And before I move forward to the action item, I would just like to announce that. Uh a pub- public forum will be held on Thursday, October the twenty third. From, I I'm sorry, beginning at six P M at the community clubhouse. And this is an opportunity for the community to come out and uh hear from the candidates under consideration for. Police chief for the city of Cordeal and after the hearing, uh after hearing from the candidates, then. Uh the public will have the opportunity to interact with them um after the, after they hear from them and ask questions. But again, uh October twenty third, which is this Thursday, six P M at the community clubhouse. And the next item I have is um an action item, you all previously approved. The community council to hold their yard sale on Saturday. Uh October eleventh, which was the one hundred mile yard sale, but due to a lack, a lack of volunteers. They asked to reschedule because it was approved for them to set up on city property located behind Fast Stop. But they asked for, uh asking for approval to hold it on Saturday, November first, from six A M to three P M. Again, they could not hold the yard sale on uh October eleventh due to a lack of volunteers.
Will it be the same location?
Same location.
It's been properly moved in second that we approved the Chris County Community Council to hold yard sale. Um Saturday, November the first from six A M to three P M. The same location which the previous event was approved, alright, any discussion? Saying no, she'll proceed to vote, Commissioner Shepherd?
Yes.
Commissioner Rainey?
Yes.
Commissioner Owens?
Yes.
Motion carried is approved.
Thank you. That's all that I.
Uh you all, one other thing while the city manager is, uh probably we get some dates for. Uh budget workshop or something. I don't know if you wanna make that a motion or consider it today, uh but we need to move with some speed. I wanna set lightening speed, move at some speed to uh. Come back and have a uh comeback with a plan. To think about, you know, what we're gonna do on the budget and things like that, so. Any thoughts, or we wanna?
Chairman, that failed, so four of us have got to agree to put it back on the agenda?
No, it don't work like that, the ordinance that speaks to that is, the budget failed, but we can do a hearing at any time. The commissioners can make a motion, that's what the specific is, we talking about putting it on the agenda or what have you, um. But what what we're talking about is um. Uh workshop like we discussed, to actually talk about and work some numbers out, that's what we're talking about. Yep. Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
Like that's what the chairman's asking.
Right. Right. October twenty seven. October twenty seven.
I got a job, I'm down on twenty seven.
October forty eight.
We have the eleven o'clock meeting, unless it's a evening meeting, but there's an eleven o'clock meeting scheduled on the twenty eighth.
October twenty nine, well, hold on. You still got nine o'clock on the twenty eighth, and then the evening on the twenty eighth. You still have nine A M, is what I'm saying, and you still have after five P M for that budget meeting, uh, I'm good with around five. Twenty eighth, around five, um, five, nine, okay, okay, sorry.
I work for work. I can make one by twenty eight.
At nine A M, nine A M. I know, that'd be, be a range, I'm being two minutes back to back, um, uh, but, you know.
Eleven.
You, you mean the eleven?
Yeah, I mean.
At, at eleven.
Okay, so, so eight o'clock, I mean, I, oh, God.
Yeah. Well, we got, that works, we use. Okay, alright, so, do we have a motion and a second to do a, a budget hearing, um?
A budget meeting.
A budget meeting, um, at nine A M, um, on, um, Tuesday, October twenty eighth. Second, okay, it's been properly moved to second, that we have a budget meeting, um, um, October twenty eighth at nine A M, alright, any discussion? CNN, she'll proceed to vote, Commissioner Rainey?
Yes.
Commissioner Owens?
Yes.
Commissioner Shepherd?
Yeah.
Alright. Thank you. Sit it up. Sit it down. I think we already went into section as well, but then, I'm, alright, can we entertain a motion, I entertain a motion to adjourn this meeting?
No move.
It's been properly moved to second, that we adjourn meeting at twelve thirty seven P M, alright, all the favorably to be known by more so, ah, ah, me and adjourn.